No.
We're live.
All right. Thank you all for coming. This is the August 53th of the Webster Planning Board. Let's take attendance. We'll start over here.
Teresa Vanamore.
Susan Youngs.
Craig Fornier.
Marlo Herrick.
Adam Mark.
Gene Lampre.
We have a quarter until our side tonight. So I guess we'll start right off with the conceptual designer view of it, Laurie and Chris Oliver. Supposed to divide that two, not five, a little hill road in the six lines. You have a presentation here?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, those present in the audience. My name is John Melfees. I work with the Phil Stone Land and Soltons. I'm here tonight on behalf of Ryan Oliver. Ryan recently purchased the property. It's a large piece of property.
Now, why don't you bring that map up here so we can see.
We have some change.
That's right, it's out there too. And we got...
Yeah, I have some reduced copies if somebody does have one. Do you guys all have copies?
We were okay.
I'll just put some out on there.
He put little ones out.
Don't have a ton, but if someone says up here, you got one, you got one? You need one?
Yeah.
Can you see it okay though, or do you want to have that size? I just...
So I'll leave them right here. How's that?
You're all set.
Yeah, yeah, I am. But, yeah, because we all know on the 511.
Yeah.
We all, of course. Yeah, well, I feel that way. I can read it.
So back to my presentation. Ryan recently purchased the property. It's over 100 acres. He fell in love with it. I mean, it's a dream of moving all of his family over there. They're gonna have a small farm. So the lots that are being proposed are for him and his relatives to start a little farm community, so to speak. What you see up in this corner of the map right here, this square, that's the area where he's proposing development. The whole parcel is rather large. It's over 100 acres. The parcel is on Little Hill Road. Parcel is zoned in the, is located in the residential and agricultural district. So the minimum lot size is five acres. Minimum frontage is 250 feet. And they do have requirements as far as sizing for depth and for width of the lots. Our lots meet all those requirements. When we go through the planning, when we go through the planning phase, we usually, you know, take a look at the property, take some rough information, take the tax map, take the GIS, take whatever we have available. We get a rough idea of what we want to do as a starting point. Ryan did that. He came to the board. It was several months back. He had a conceptual design, well, conceptual hearing. They call it conceptual subdivision hearing. He presented his ideas to the board. And based upon that meeting, we went out on the ground. We performed a survey of the property. We were proposing development. Brought that information back, took input from Ryan, took input from our engineers, and we came up with a rough layout of what he's trying to do. So as you see here on this map, if I can get it right here. So there's one, two, three, four, five, and then one big track, six. And that's because we're not proposing development anywhere else. The plan is to have a private road that comes in off of Little Hill Road. So I believe that right here is where the town maintains to. There's a short section that goes down the hill where we're going to be proposing a turnaround. I think that would be a benefit to have a nicer turnaround at a grade that's reasonable for everybody. So that turnaround will be at the bottom, the hill from there. It's very flat running up through. The private road that we show here is not exact. Once again, it's just a rough idea of what we're trying to do. Once we fine tune it, we'll be back to the board with a different rendition of this. Close to this, but something different. The whole point of this meeting is to come here tonight to get some input from the board of what we're proposing, see if we have any hurdles, any concerns they may have. So when we come back with our design plans, we address everything. That's the basic concept. I'm gonna step back for a minute, see if the board has any questions for me.
Yeah, let me just lay a little groundwork here. This is a design review. This is not a public hearing, as he said. But they're interested in his board input, okay? We just not necessarily have to take public input because it's not a public hearing. But at the end of this, at the, when the board is done here, we, I will ask for permits and suggestions from the public, from your board. The next step after this process is a formal application by the, by the Olivers after they, after the changes are made here. And at that point, there will be a public hearing. So that's just laying out what's gonna happen here. I guess I'll open it up to the board. Is there any questions?
Mike, one question I have is from the maintained road to where, you know, you're proposing to enter, how many feet is that? I mean, is it on there and I just missed it?
It's around 600 feet. It's...
Okay, okay.
That's my recommendation. It's just overseas.
And you have driven that road, right?
I have.
It's a pretty rented road from, from the top where the property starts?
It's, we understand, yes.
Who's gonna maintain it and winter?
So this is the reasons why we're here. So when Ryan purchased the property, it was shared with him that the town maintains to a certain point. There's been a couple different opinions as far as what the maintenance is on the road. But there is a section of the ordinance which allows for the upgrade of a road or what have you. So depending upon which route we travel, I guess that would be what the upgrade would be.
Any change in the status of the road, upgrading or whatever, would have to be approved by a select board.
We understand that.
And whatever...
And is that what you're looking for is to conceptually say, all right, we'll maintain our part, but we'd like to see if this will be upgraded to a town road? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the private road would be private maintenance. And, you know, the goal would be to have the town maintain this section up to the private road. And what we would have to do to get that to happen, so...
It would demand a lot of work.
Yeah, whatever you, I mean, as part of your proposal, you should specify what it's gonna take to upgrade that road.
Yeah, I mean, some of the, some of this stuff, I'm sorry, I'll, go ahead.
The New Hampshire Department of Transportation has a 19, 2016 standard road specifications for public roads. And you take a look at that, you'd have to meet those specs. Assuming that the board would even consider changing the status of that road. I have a couple other comments on the road itself. As part of your, as part of your application, you should have a cross-section of the road with indicating what you're gonna put down for a base layer, what you're gonna put down for a running layer.
On their proposal?
On their, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if we wanna call it a private road or a driveway.
Well, it can't be a driveway because you've got six houses down there. So technically, you're gonna have to have a town road, town specs, if you're gonna put six houses down there. And then we got fire trucks and, you know, rescue or whatever happens. And, and then the next thing up there is the water situation for fire because there is no water on the top of Little Hill to speak of that, you know, you're trucking water from Lake Winnapocket, three miles away.
Well, there is a little pond.
Yeah, but...
On the left, most of the way down the hill, but...
If I could interject, part of our proposal I didn't share with you, there is a pond that will be proposed on the property. So where you see the two middle lots up there, the two square lots...
It looks, it looks like a fairly big pond.
It's, it's an exaggerated pond. Once again, we'll have to get some engineering involved. It was just a rough idea that somewhere in this area, we're gonna be proposing a pond, which we would be able to put a hydrant on. So that's been, that has been considered.
Yeah, as part of your proposal, you should, you should flesh that out and talk about how big it's gonna be. I mean, for your own sake, you probably wanna cost it out too.
And one other thing, that back, a few years back, they denied a person to build on the left-hand side, going down over the hill. And so here, we're, I mean, this proposal is not what you showed us the first time around by any means.
Few reasons for that.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's not what you showed us.
Well, no, but it does matter.
And the thing of it is, with that other lot, the left-hand side of the road, I mean, that was closer to the top of the hill than what we're doing here. And they denied that building permit for that lot.
Well, my understanding, you know, spending, spending a little time digging into this stuff, is that because these houses are on a private...
Right.
...driveway, they have to go before the zoning board of adjustment. And the zoning board of adjustment can give them a...
Variance.
Variance. To build their houses on this road. Now, you bring up a big point about fire trucks. Our driveway regulations, which I don't know if this is how the driveway works, requires that you have turnouts every 300 feet. And it specifies the width of the turnout. Yeah, so you should take a look at those regs and, and put that into your proposal.
I think that...
They also, the state, at this end, at this DOT doc, talks about not a lollipop. They call this a lollipop circle. They want a...
Tea. Tea.
Or a teardrop.
They want a...
Teardrop.
Teardrop, thank you.
Tea was also an option in the, in the reg.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, the reason why it was, is turned to seasonal is for the plowing issue of it. You get down over that hill, you can't get back up it.
Wow.
And, and I'm the guy that put that into the place in 1998. Salisbury shut their end down. I've seen times where you plow down over that, but you don't have sand enough to get back up out of it if it's frozen ground with ice. And that is a problem going down over that hill.
Yeah.
And it's not very wide.
Yeah, so...
I'm just, I'm just curious why? Because right at the top of the road, where there is now sort of a rudimentary turnaround that the school bus uses, why didn't you put the main, the road in there where it, we wouldn't be dealing with trying to completely redo...
Yeah.
...a chunk of road at very high cost?
Yeah, that's a good point.
There were a couple of reasons that came about as we learned engineering information about the property. One of those being that there are wetlands kind of just between, or on the edge of the butter, Matthew Fallon's property and this property.
He's talking about this.
And so we were trying to minimize the impact on that, whereas the road that we showed last time would have more of a...
We have a wetland study right here.
Well, can you, can you... Did you have a comment in there?
Sure, sure, we, we could. We were just, that was one of the reasons. The second reason was that the, in trying to meet the ordinance specifications for the road grade for the new road, that's the, that's the most level position. So that gets you down well below the specifications. Whereas if we go...
You mean, you mean level, the whole, the whole road coming in?
The whole new road is, is...
The way they've got this in here, I checked it out. It's about a 2% grade, which going down, which is not, which is great, which is a nice grade.
Whereas if we...
If you came up here, you'd have...
It is pretty steep down.
You'd have another pretty steep road.
I skied down it before the trees revenged.
Oh, yeah. So that was part of the reason is, is trying to avoid that. I think we absolutely could. But the grade, if this road was improved, was actually not as bad as like 6% versus where we were coming in.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the way to deal with grades is to make your road longer, right?
Say that again?
The way to deal with grades is to make your road longer.
Yeah.
I think one of our consider, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, so...
No, go ahead.
I just think to, to ask the town to improve that road, I think that's an uphill battle. Am I wrong? It's just the money and the budget, everything unfortunately is not, is not there. So that, that's just one piece of the puzzle as, as we work out budgets. It's like person two, and I'm like, oh, boy. Because, you know, unfortunately, they make it difficult to create a town road that we then maintain and we build and we pay for. Yeah, that's, that kind, it kind of, I, you know, I feel the pain on both sides. I feel like that kind of stinks because I take people in town and blah, blah. But I just think that could be an uphill battle personally.
And she's a select person, so...
Well, I think that, you know, a lot of this information came to Ryan after he had purchased the property, even though he did his best to do all of his due diligence. We had documents we received after he'd purchased the property about the hurdles that somebody else had in regards to Little Hill Road. And we weren't aware of that. So we do understand that it would need, you know, some kind of an upgrade. And that would be part of our plans to be come back. We're not opposed to an alternate location. You know, the road grades where the driveway come in wouldn't be like 2%, it'd be more like 8%, which is not out of line. As a matter of fact, most of your roads are gonna have some grade to that degree. Most towns have like a max of a 10% on the driveway. And so, I mean, if, if there's an alternate location, the board would like to see where they, they think that, you know, having the road come off at a different location such as a turnaround may be more pleasing. I mean, we're not opposed. I mean, obviously, we come in here with a basic idea, right? He wants to, he wants to build a little farm community for him and his relatives. They've all got together, they want to do it, they're in love with this. So first step is, you know, how do we do this? And they come to the board and they get a rough design, it gives some input. Next step is we survey the property so we know what it really consists of. And we say, well, if we go the Little Hill Road, this is what the private road may look like. Hearing the input from the board and any suggestions from the board, that's how we revise our plan. You know, we have, you know, we've done millions of projects in different towns where, where we know that, you know, there's code for fire departments in regards to water and as far as, you know, turnarounds, you know, every 300 feet or what, what they need to have. I mean, that's all stuff that's gonna be addressed when we come back in. We'll obviously reach out to different departments to get any comments from them for specifics should we have any questions. However, you know, like I said, we're here tonight to get this input. So if the board is saying to us they, they kind of like to see a different entrance, I mean, that, that's great input. I mean, this is what we're looking for.
I have a, do you have any things?
Well, you can, you can go.
So you've done a wetland study, right?
We have. We delineated the wetlands on the, the whole northeastern portion of the property. So everything you see in the picture has been delineated, delineated. We have gone beyond that to a, a small amount, you know. We haven't done the whole 100 acres, just where we're, we're proposing development and a little bit outside.
So I, I see a bunch of lines on this map. What, maybe you can help us clarify what these lines mean?
So there's different lines on the map. And when you see this, this line right here, I think it has a three, three dots and a dash, three dots and a dash. Okay, that's the one you get in wetlands. And what that is, is we have a certified wetland scientist. One of our certified wetland scientists will go out on the site. They have to evaluate the ground to see if there's any wetlands present. And what they'll do is they'll take soil samples, so they have a hand auger. They'll walk along, they'll hand auger the soils to see if it meets the criteria. They're also looking for three different, three total criteria to meet the requirements of it being a wetland. So they look at the plant species, vegetation, trees. They look at the soils. They look to see if there's any habitat within the wetlands, like fairy shrimp or stuff, stuff microscopic you wouldn't see, so to speak. But they go out there, they're certified. They go out, hang flags on the trees. You guys, I don't know if you have any abutists here, you've probably seen some flags on the roadway to have. The pink flags with black stripes, that's, that's what they hang. They go out in market, our survey crew goes out on the ground, we locate those, we put those on the plan so we know where they are. We also have a second line on the plan. And it's this dash, 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 slash, slash. That's, that's the USDA's soil line. So what they did is, basically, this was supposed to be for finding good farmland. The United States Department of Agriculture had done a large-scale survey of all the United States. And on there, they had done test pits or hand augers of the soils to understand the characteristic of the soils. Were they well-drained? Were they rocky? What were they? So that they could find the best farmland. Later on, we've used it in development because we understand that's great to know from an engineering standpoint what the soil characteristics are. So there's two different lines on there for that reason. One of them is the wetland line, which we don't want to be in the other one. It's just a helpful line to understand the characteristics of the soil on the property.
Thank you.
Yep.
So which line, wait, just because I was, I'm trying to, this one line that comes in about just to the right of 479C and goes down, it's, it's not, it doesn't match any of the things on the...
Right here?
On the code.
So are you talking about this line right here that comes out like a finger?
Nope. It starts at the, at the...
Oh, this line right here, that, that gray line.
No, not the flood zone line.
Just come right over here and show it.
It's just easier, this line that doesn't match anything here.
That's what, that's what I explained, that's the soil line. That's the United States Department of Agriculture soil line. When you're proposing development, a lot of times...
Okay, it's not on here. It doesn't...
It's right here.
Okay, it is not on the legend. Okay, okay.
To the soils legend.
This number here tells you what's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just...
Yeah, and when you propose development, if you go before the state of New Hampshire with any permitting, or most towns actually have it as part of their checklist for subdivision, that you include those soils in the plan.
Yeah.
So...
Let me ask you a question. I see you have a 100-year flood line in here. Where did that information, and what year was that? Is that before the dam, was spelled, or after the dam?
So we have a bunch of information on that, which, your basic flood logs came out when 1970s, they figured they needed to do something about the floods. They introduced these flood maps, or FEMA introduced these flood maps so that residents could get insurance if their towns participated in the program. The data that they had at the time to produce these maps was horrible. It was basically 1920, 1930s, they flew the United States, they came up with USDS maps. They're good for anywhere between five and 10-meter intervals. So they can't tell what goes on for an elevation change in between those. So those lines were exaggerated. 1971, they had updates to the maps where they did some micro-studies for, for the populated areas. That never really got used. The bank said, you know, if you get a loan to somebody, it's FDIC backed up. If you see they're in a flood zone, make sure they have insurance. Well, they didn't understand the maps. It was years that went by that people needed flood insurance and never got it. 2009, they introduced some new maps. They did micro-studies on a larger scale. And they still didn't touch every area. It was just the populated areas. But once again, they extended their survey. So what we have is an exaggerated line. Clearly, it doesn't climb. Floodwaters don't climb whatever it is, 50 feet uphill. We know what elevation the, the federal government chose when they put in the flood control. We have correspondence between the Army Corps of Engineers. They had an elevation that they had in mind to propose to take any properties that were in that, in that zone where they proposed flooding. Our property is out of that. Matter of fact, the back line of our property was chosen by the Army Corps of Engineers to be outside of our property. So, I mean, what we need to do is this, this permits and there's ways that you can apply for the removal of a flood zone on your property. What you need to do is you just need to show them the information, the contour data, send it into FEMA. FEMA says, okay, we didn't look at this area under microscope, but because of your request to do it, we'll look at it now. And then we can get a removal for that. So we, we know we're good, we know we're there. It's just right now, that's where that approximate line lies.
So you're gonna do that?
Well, I, I can probably tell you that in 1987, I believe, that probably the water was within three feet or so going over the top of that dam. And I can almost guarantee you that that water on this flood line up there with those houses on the bottom would be wet. And I've seen it. And if you go up to the back of the dam, you'll see where it's a high-water mark on there. And it's up there.
Yeah, we understand, and we know that they have elevation, and we know that information from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Did they tell you where the water stopped up there?
They have an elevation, so we can tell exactly where it's at.
In 87, where did it, where was it in 1987? The elevation of the water?
That's FEMA's determination, not the, not the Corps of Engineers.
I think, though, that's something that you gotta, I mean, you gotta have to look at that.
The Army Corps will tell you what the high-water elevation mark is.
We, we have that.
And then you look on your map and you see where that is.
It's not there on the property, it's outside the property, so we've covered that base.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sadasha.
I mean, I think it's okay. We can go into more detail if you want.
Yeah.
I mean, because Ryan here also is an engineer and has taken hydromodeling to a degree and has actually looked at vector RAS for the entire area of study preliminarily prior to us even looking at the property. So we already know all the modules as far as where the floodwaters go. Now, if there's other waters or a stream or something that's on the property, we had Mother State floods where everything was underwater.
Yeah, this was a...
But that's just a section, that has nothing to do with the flood zone down there.
This wasn't a Mother State flood. This was pretty good for people that lived in town. Well, you guys probably remember that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Boat down through there, and it's like the, it was up there.
Using the flow rates of, from the gauge data from that particular storm simulated, you know, that, that exact storm to see what it would have done. It doesn't, in, in that simulation, or, which is the same model the Army Corps uses, FEMA uses to make these, these lines. It didn't crest the property, but did connect over the road just down in the Army land, right? So just past the seasonal.
Yeah, wow.
So, so I think, I think you're right, I just don't know if it was there or...
I think you probably find that it was right up there pretty well because, if I recall, you know, and I, I've been in town for not as long as these people have, but I'm pretty sure that you could have gone right down through the tree line in a boat without any problem at all.
That would've been fun.
We're not disagreeing with the fact that, you know, there's some kind of flood around the property. The specifics of the exact location right now, we don't have. What we have right now is the proximity location. We do have the elevations from the Army Corps of Engineers. We do have contours that are in relationship to that elevation. And anything we do in the future, we'd have that, we'd have that as part of our consideration for improvements, proposed improvements. But once again, as a conversation, piece for design review here tonight, you know, it wasn't beneficial to do a very expensive study just to find out that...
Correct. There is also an independent company called Risk Factor who has done a study in this area. And it showed very similar data to what we produced and what the new data shows.
I'm sure where is the, where are the issues? I'm not a lawyer, okay?
Me neither.
But I was reading New Hampshire RSA 674-41 stipulates that building permits cannot be issued for lots in Class 6 or private roads without approval of the Board of Selectmen and a release of liabilities recorded at the Merrimack County Register of Ds. So you might want to read that section again.
They have to get a state subdivision as well, right? If lots are five acres or less, state subdivision is to be a condition of...
These are greater than five acres.
It says five acres or less.
Or less, okay.
Yeah. All of our lots will meet the criteria, but they will not need state subdivision approval.
Yeah. They're all need that criteria.
It says five plus or minus because we don't have an exact number right now. Anything will be 5.01 or whatever. Anything will be five point zero one, or whatever, and it will not need state subdivision If you're creating a lot that's four point nine acres, you'll need state subdivision approval. If you're creating a lot that's five point zero acres or greater, you don't need it.
Five point zero one, but it has to be over five, it can't be five point zero.
It's five or over.
No, it says anything five or less. At least that's what it says.
Our lots will need the criteria, where they will need it.
Any other comments?
But I appreciate that point, to make sure that we're making-
The road, I think, needs to be back up on the top where we originally, what he showed us on that plan. This, he is not gonna work out.
And I would agree for several reasons, just, but one, the main one is what I mentioned prior, just, yeah. That might be fighting an uphill battle.
Dean, do you have any comments?
I just, to me, there was just the issue of the class of the road, and I did not understand that a class five was a seasonal road, and it states that in here in several places. I thought it went to class six was the seasonal, class five, Little Hill Road pays a part, I consider it was a class five.
Class six is a discontinued road.
Right. And it's stated in several places that it was two locations on class five seasonable road. And that is not fact.
So, there is, there was correspondence we received after Ryan purchased the property. So, the RSA states that if the town doesn't maintain the road for a period of five to six consecutive years, they can deem it to be a class six road. Only the Board of Selectment can change the status of a road. They tried to do that, this came up confusingly for several different people that were trying to propose something off of that road, and what they voted upon was, the town put in a town warrant to call it a class five seasonal road. And what a class five seasonal road is, is a road to summer cottages, is what they call it. In other words, no winter maintenance. So that was what we understood the status of the road to be.
However, I don't, I don't think it would benefit us to spend too much time debating what the exact class of the road is. I think the more important question is, if we want to use the road acceptance policy to attempt to upgrade it, or if we want to move, as suggested, move the entrance out of that space.
Before we open it up for public comment, I'd like to ask our road agent, fire chief, if he has any comments here.
Just listening, taking it all in. Everybody has a, has a dream, everybody has a plan, and we have to hear it out.
No, I will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is some concerns, but let's see how far-
You voice them.
Yeah.
I want you to voice your concerns that you have, you're the fire chief, the road agent, you tell us what, what you think.
Well, in nineteen eighty-six, we put that sign up there. Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Put that sign up there, Salisbury stopped plowing there and, and you'd get down into the bottom, and get turned around, you couldn't get back up out of there. So that was the reason that sign went up, and the snowmobiles have been using it since. And if you go all the way to the bottom of that hill and swoop back around, it's just, it's quite a grade, and slippery nights, and snowstorms, and Little Hill isn't the first road that gets plowed in town. It, you guys get out to go to work in the morning, but it's not the first one on the list.
Can I ask a clarifying question? One of the questions I had was, was the reason it was difficult to turn around and get back up related to, one, the fact that it's, the grade is kind of degraded over time, so now there's a more steep section than it needs to be, and then the second being that the turnaround isn't down there, so there's not a safe place to really turn around, especially if you're in a car, right, and you go down and you need to try to come back up. So that, that's part of what I was thinking, was that, one, you could address the grade of the road, which would make it safer, 'cause there are some sections, if you look at, you know, we took the data and looked at the grade, and right now, there are sections that are not as convenient, but when you, when you look at it, it's not too hard to address that in terms of grade.
So I don't know how many times you've been up and down that hill, but the elevation in that hill hasn't changed. In the spring of the year, every now and then you go back up there and put the road back in, because it washes down over there when the stuff gets plugged up, but the, it really hasn't changed.
The second-
It's as steep today as it was then, and it was as steep than it is today.
It's hard to drive it in the summer.
Sure, yeah. The second clarifying question I had was, one about if it would help with people who go over that unknowingly anyway and get stuck down there, 'cause now at least they have an opportunity to get out. And also, maybe you'd have, you know, you could make a section of it more accessible for people wanting to park there to use their snowmobiles, right? So, I'm just kind of asking questions about, like, you know, if you make some adjustments, does that actually make it a nicer thing than just the same, you know, in its current state, obviously?
Yeah, if you take the, if you take the centerline grade of that road section, there are some sections that are up in ten percent or what have you. Obviously, they would need to be, yeah, more excess. But if you actually take a look at it, and you draw a line from where there's a good grade to where there's a good grade, and you take a look at what the elevation would be, it would be like a six percent grade if it received upgrades, it would have to be cuts in the road, and then you'd have to put down layers of gravel, and you'd probably have to put down riprap shoulders, so we know that something would have to happen to that road. We're not in here saying, we just want to use it. The bigger concern was, you know, we're proposing the location get input, you know, if we were to go that route, we wouldn't come in here with a plan showing that, so everybody's angry. So, you know, that's, hear us out, we're not in here saying that. We do understand the concern of the road, its condition and the grade, but we want to be able to use it if it's a, if it's a possibility. And that's his first route.
And I'm flexible as well, I just wanted to offer those ideas in case they hadn't been considered.
But were you, you, you would do the upgrades to that?
You would have to.
You would have to do, yeah, you would, you would be making the-
Yeah, we'd have to look at what the-
Yeah, and cost-wise.
We would have to do a study to figure out exactly what would be involved, and to see if it's a feasible, feasible thing to do.
Instead of entering up here, but maybe getting an exception for the driveway to be, you know, be under ten percent, as you were said, to get to these lots, per se, and maybe propose a road.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a way to put a shorter road in, and we can come off the hammerhead, and that's not a concern of the board, concern of the board, we'd love to do that, if that's something they want to see. We just, like I said, we're not gonna have a two percent grade, we're gonna have a more, like, an eight percent grade, which is reasonable.
Frankly, the shorter the new road is, the better.
Well, yeah, it's not cheap to build any kind of road, and that's what, that's kind of the major, some of the major concerns here, and, you know.
But this is five hundred feet shorter than the previous one.
Yeah, and it's not like we're gonna, he's not looking to come in here, just slam this big road through, put in a million houses, this is something that he's doing with his family, you know, they want to do a farming community, they want to be able to raise livestock, dairy, you know, it's something that they've thought about for a long time, everybody's on board, it's just how do we get there, and-
There's one other consideration I want to throw out, and that's that, all these developments, I mean, all of us have seen it in town, you know, it's nice that it's a family road, you know, you build it, you use it, but these things get sold. You know, there's a lifespan to these things. And at some point, people want the town to take over that road. And if you don't build it, if you don't build a good road to begin with, you're fighting yourself all, uphill all the time, and it makes it much harder for the town to accept that. In other words, you have to think, you have to think, you have to think down the road.
I think that if he wants to do something with the driveways, I mean, we obviously have to look at the fire code, and to see, you know, turnarounds, grade, what's reasonable, what's acceptable, so, I mean, those will all be starting points with what he wants to do.
I mean, as it was drawn here, the, 'cause my understanding of the town ordinance is, correct me if I'm remembering wrong, was that anything over three driveway was a private road. And so, but the private road would still want to meet, once you do that, the private road would still need to meet the town ordinance, so that was the intention.
Still has to meet town standards.
So you're gonna build that road twenty-one feet wide, travel lane and pave it?
We'll have to see what the ordinance calls for.
Well, that's, if you go, if the town's going to accept the road, that's what-
It would be a private road, is what we're proposing.
For now, for now.
If we were to want the town to accept the road, then it would have to meet the criteria up to town.
No, it has to meet the criteria of all the stuff, the fire trucks.
Well, that's, yes, that's one consideration. We understand that.
It needs to be built to town specs, but to build a-
We understand, we have all the ordinance, but, you know, we haven't designed anything to a degree yet. I mean, why would you put that much money into something until you understand everybody's input? You know, you're gonna do expensive studies, expensive engineering, all this lovely stuff.
Well, I think that's where I start first, I'm not at whatevers, but to find out what it costs to get in there before you-
Well, that's where we're at too, but we want to understand where we can position this private road, you know.
So that's what, tell me about your private road, what, I mean, is it gonna be twelve feet wide? What are you doing?
It's the twenty, twenty feet wide, which I think is what's specified in the documentation. But as far as the construction, I mean, everything is just the same that's in the road document, except, I don't know, is binder required on top?
Well, whatever's required is what we're looking at right now, but we don't have all that information. One of us here is trying to discuss-
Yeah, the next time, the next time we come for-
We understand you're proposing something that's within the town ordinance.
The next time we come for your formal application, we'd like to see that specified. There's one other issue, and that's that all the regs say, if this development has a regional impact, in other words, does it have an impact on Salisbury, for example? And as far as I can see, it doesn't, mainly because that road is, is pretty bad, but, you know, it's probably not gonna be al, always be it, right? So, that's gonna get fixed at some point, probably.
Going down over the hill?
Maybe not.
Probably not.
Because it's going-
Since nineteen ninety-six.
All the properties acquired, all the, past the gate, are all floodplain, and it's United States of America property, so, you know, the chances of them ever selling that land are very slim, they bought it for a reason, they want to use it, so this section of the road really is, is the best benefit, you know, for the people that have bought it, and, you know-
And did, did they put a gate up there every year?
Yes.
Yep.
A little, a little possible.
It's not driving a whole lot of the gate.
Did, I was just curious, I know you sent this to the Army Corps, since they're in a butter. Did, any, was there any response?
Oh, I, Tia from the dam contacted me and asked for a set of the plans, but I didn't hear any comments after that.
Okay, I was just curious.
Is there any more comments here from the board, before we open it up to the public?
I think that, you know, when they come back with a redesign, it needs to start at the, up here at the top. That's what I think needs to happen, right? 'Cause we're gonna be putting fire trucks down in there, or whatever, and if it's a freezing rain night, you're done. And I've seen it, when this house burnt, freezing rain, and all you do is lug sand and sand and sand, and it's not a good situation for a truck going down over that hill, and it's not that wide. And even if you did the work, you still got your butters on the left-hand side going down, they own that land, it's not town land, and so, to widen that, it's all gonna have to go the other, the other side of the road, and I just-
No, we could, we could always do a dedication from our own land, and there was actually a dedication, when the property was surveyed, several years back, ten, twenty years, whatever, Richard Bartlett had put in a subdivision, they did several subdivisions actually of that property, and when they did that, they did a road dedication, so they went, put the property line on the backside of the walls. So we already know there's a wider right of way, and we do understand your concern, we don't want to get slaughtered here tonight, like we're here really posing and you go-
Well, I just don't want you to put all kinds of time into something that really is not gonna-
We understand, but you're looking at it like it's a ten percent road, and we wouldn't come in here like that, so I don't want to get slaughtered for that. I'm gonna try to say, if we, if we did anything with that road, we would look at those issues. But, you know, we want to know if, what the comments are, the hurdles, before we even consider that option. This is what we'd like to do, but-
Well, I gave you the-
Understood.
The, what I think.
I know, I just, I don't want to get slaughtered from somebody, that's all. This is what the gentleman wants to do, and I'm trying to figure it out.
It's being right out front, common sense.
Understood.
That's what I'm doing.
All right. Any other comments, Dean?
Nope.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to questions from the public.
I'm Nancy Webster, I'm in a butter. My question was actually for you guys, 'cause I just don't know the laws in town, is there a short-term rental policy? Is there a short-term rental, Airbnb, VRBO, is there a policy about that in town?
No.
There is?
Unfortunately, no.
I'm not saying one way or the other, but I think that is something we should be looking at.
Yep, we should be looking at that.
I agree.
Is that an issue?
Just so you know, it's not an intention.
I mean, is there people doing that, doing you, is that an issue?
True, if any of the houses on, on the road do.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering, yes.
But the plan is for these to be year-round residences, not seasonal, you said?
These are residences, they're gonna live there.
They're gonna live there full-time.
Yes. Sir, can I get your name?
Chris Miller.
Chris Miller.
I mean, he wants to be welcomed by the community, he's here to bring his family here. This is his dream, so.
We've all been here for a while, so.
That's all.
Just like to know what's going on.
I do have some questions. Paul, question is, my wife Maria, we live at four twenty-three Little Road. On lot two-five-five, there seems to be a driver that's going in to a larger residence. I want to find out exactly where that is, is that at the end of the turnaround, where the school bus turnaround, the fire fix turnaround?
Right, this residence right here?
Yes.
I think what they were proposing right here is, if, you know, they were gonna be doing a farming community, they may have a large barn. That's all that is. And it would be on one of the lots, and would have to meet the town standards for setbacks and what have you.
Do you have any idea how many cattle might be in the hole?
Can I get your name from the minute?
Dennis Fallon.
Back my question to these lots, what's the proposed square footage of the houses that they're looking to put on these properties?
Ryan, can I answer that? I mean, it's basically just like, you know, if you buy a house, everybody's gonna have a different opinion, I believe that's what the family's gonna do, they're all gonna have different sized houses, but Ryan?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that I can comment just yet, 'cause there's a range, and we're still trying to figure out.
Another concern about that property is the gallons-per-minute flow of the well water. We're at around an eight gallons-per-minute flow already, which is low. Okay? And, yep, and I'd be worried if we're putting six additional properties on that property, all sucking off the aquifer, that we're gonna have no water. And I would ask everybody to check what the gallons-per-minute flow is on the wells. That's a major concern.
Big concern.
We're, we understand that, you know, we're, this is a huge problem. We're not doing a million lots here. The only reason why the numbers that we have, we have here tonight is 'cause that's the participants and his family that are involved. You know, unfortunately, and just like you have well water rights, you know, he has some well water rights too. So, I mean, I understand it's a hurdle, it's something that's gonna be proposed, but we're not proposing a million lots here, and they're pretty stacked, over a hundred acres, so.
One lot will make a difference.
Yeah, I just want to know what-
Well, just like you have rights, he has rights too, you know.
He has his due, you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, my other concern is, back in two thousand twenty, we hired an attorney to do an investigation on the class of the road, and after he subpoenaed records from the town, there's a lot of questions whether that road is actually a private road or not.
So, was that Paul Alfonso?
Yes.
Yeah, so we saw that correspondence. Paul is really good at what he does.
Yep.
Paul, he does case law for roads, he does all kinds of stuff. You know, that document that Paul produced, it's either a class five road, or a class six road, or whatever the town thinks it is. So, I mean, that's what it comes down to. So, I mean, it's one of those things where there is prescriptive rights from the state of New Hampshire prior to a certain date, where if the town has been something, they have acquired prescriptive rights. So, by prescription, the town does have a right to be there. If there was something that was gonna happen to that road, obviously, we'd have to- Um, if there was something that was gonna happen to that road, obviously we'd have to petition selectmen to see if they would accept that road, um, at the class five status. Um, but, you know, for someone to be able to access their property, let's dig this property out of the picture and say somebody else has a piece of land on a classics road, there are, um, sections of the regulations and ordinances which allow them to upgrade sections of road because they need access to the property. Um, so, I mean, anything we do, we understand. We know through those documents, I'm actually thankful that we have that information. It was pretty cool that Reese Tom did that. Um, but, and we understand the hurdles. None of these hurdles were brought to our attention when he purchased the property. He did do a diligence with the owner, he did do a diligence with the town, but he found these documents after we had already gotten to this. So, I mean. The gracious hope here, we're, we're finally figuring out a plan.
Yep, and, uh, I wish he talked to me first, that could've saved a lot of headaches.
A couple of observations. Um, one, the parking area, uh, the turnaround, uh, on the road that, uh, is being proposed, just seemed, I, I don't know the footage and stuff of where the, the turnaround is, but it seemed logical to me to move that to the end of that property so that they had more room to plow and store, snow, whatever, uh, if they have any future considerations.
Are you talking about, you mean flip it to the other side of the section right there?
No, just move the circle down to the end of the property line.
Just down here?
Nope. Where your turnaround is, uh, on the circle by the last property.
So if, if it was a private road, we would be responsible for this, no means.
Yeah, it's just an observation on that. You mentioned cattle and, um, I don't mind cows or horses, my son next door has, I'm devastated also. But I know, I hold my nose and try and hold my breath when I go through Bosco Inn, pass down by the lights where all the cows are. Gee, I hope that's not a lot of cows gonna be coming in here.
A lot more smells.
Water seems to be a problem, uh, at least on my property, my son's property, uh, coming down off the hill. So I would hope that anything that you did would kind of take that into consideration about doing something about the water problems that we have, uh, in the future. And paving and flattening out the land and stuff is just gonna lead to more potential problems, I think, with flooding and stuff. I don't know whether you, can you build inland that's in a hundred, hundred-year floodplain? Just a question.
Well, yeah, I think you can, it's just you can't get, you can't get insurance.
Gee, the answer to that is, when a town adopts a policy, if the town says, we're gonna take on FEMA's, uh, we want our residents to be able to have insurance, so we're gonna adopt these policies. If they do that, that means the residents can get insurance. They also have to look after FEMA's policies, which would include building above the floodplain. Now, right now, we know that's an exaggerated line, so it's one of those things where we have to show the other line. We, we understand that, you know, I mean, don't look at that line like it's real. The data they had was so horrible when they produced these lines, that some people that are on top of a hill, kinda like this is, a hundred feet from any floodwaters, but because that's all they had for data, that line goes around their house, and they'll never see water in their entire life. Now, there are some parts of this property that are adjacent to the Army Corps of Engineers, and we understand that, we know those elevations. And we do know the concerns that were brought to our attention from the rotation. We don't know the exact location of that, but that'll all come out through the modeling, so, I mean, that's all stuff that'll be done.
I'd also like to comment that one, I hope you don't hold this, hold my feet to the fire on this one, but one of the things my, my hope is, is that, you know, this, this was pretty clear cut, what was it, two thousand nine? Is that right?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, so, so the, you know, this was clear cut, and what you've got growing on this land right now is very different than what was there. And that caused a lot of erosion issues and, and caused the soil not to retain as much, much of the water. And so one of our hopes is to have a forest management plan, come in and start to improve this property so that it matches more of the surrounding forest land, instead of being that kind of early brushy forest. And I think that will help improve the soil and improve its retention of water as well. It's an intention, you know, if you, if you can help me with that.
How much, how much, um, field land do you think you're gonna try to, um, make? I mean, I don't know how much you're gonna have, I mean, it, they may be all new, but.
Yeah, we, all that is still in discussion, I mean, when I, when I say small, there's a reason I keep saying small farm, right? It's a, uh, if we do cows, which is still up in the air, you know, it'd be probably three or four, so that would be a few acres, maybe five acres, if I get the soil going really well, that'd be big, you know, I think we'd probably do less than that. You know, if we do, um, any pigs, then we would probably actually just do them in the forest and have them help us with magnets of rush and keep the fire t- tendered low. And, and that type of thing, so, you know, and that would just be a handful. Not, not, this is not a Midwest, you know, thousand-acre operation.
Um, Joanne Fallon, I'm just wondering, so would your new private road where you have that turnaround, so that would be now where the buses would have to go down that road to turn around? Because right now, they're turning around sort of like we're in that area, right? Right, the, behind Matt's property. So the bus turn, the buses would have to go down that road, turn around, yes, that's, I guess, where they have to turn.
That's up to the district.
So the turnaround, if I can speak, the turn.
They could make them walk to the end.
To the end of their private road if they wanted to.
No, well, I'm just even worried about the buses going down that road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like that road.
I mean, our kids used to have to walk down to the end.
The turnaround that's there now will stay there, because it's been there so long. That's where the bus turns around, and a lot of people turn around, plow trucks turn around. So that turnaround that's there, it might be on their property, but it's been there so long and been used as a turnaround, I believe that.
The script is right, it was, yeah, we understand that, and, you know, it's, it's somebody.
No, no, I was just, I wasn't going after you, I was just explaining to that young lady what I thought would happen.
Yeah, and I was trying to help with that too, so I, like, somebody had mentioned here, I think it is up to the district. I know when I was a kid, they wouldn't go up our road, we used to have to walk almost half a mile down there. This is a private road, the district doesn't wanna drive it, so kids will be at the end of it, but, I mean.
They did it for elementary, like, once they went to middle school.
I mean, my, my kids.
They had to walk three miles.
Yeah, another question here.
Yes, I was wondering what your, um, proposed time plan was for building permits or for, is this gonna be like, get the building permits and it's all gonna happen at once, or are you planning a five-year plan or a ten-year plan? Or what is your plan for the family if, if this should?
Uh, so my hope was that, because I, I suspected some of the road issues and things might take a little longer to iron out, my hope was to maybe build the, the kind of barn, uh, first, and then, and then after everything else was approved, build the remainder, the road in the back, um, and one more, one of the additional houses. And I was hoping to do that part next year, if possible. If that works out, that'd be great, if it doesn't, we'll be pitching. The remainder, um, most of my family is indicated somewhere within a, a five-year timeframe is when they would like to do it. But I, I, I know that, I know life, right? And so let's, I assume that that would take, you know, some, some years after that, right? So it would be one at a time, probably, on most use, um, you know, so fairly, in that sense, a fairly small impact on a single basis.
And there's no plan for ten years after that or five years after that to develop the rest?
It'd actually be fairly difficult. Um, there's, uh, one of the soil types that, um, is not preferred to be built on starts to cut in as well as a pretty significant section of wetlands through the middle. I don't know about the wetlands down on the south side, but that side seems to be maybe a little better. So, no, we don't have any intention to, to build anymore down, down there, we just wanna improve that land and protect it.
Are there any other questions?
I do, what is the, uh, the town's ordinance of building up a class six road?
They have to get, uh, zoning board approval, they have to get a variance.
But, but, I, I'm a little confused, and I, I just don't know anything about roads or this, so. But I was wondering, I thought there was an ordinance that said you had to have two hundred and fifty feet of town road signage on a class five road for every, two hundred and fifty feet for a house lot. Is that, what's, do you?
Well, they, the way this is laid out, there is two hundred and fifty feet of signage on this private road.
But is that a concept, is that something that, if it's not a town-maintained road, can, is that, is that gonna be a showstopper for them?
Well, again, it has, I believe it has to go through.
The select board, I think. If the road is private, you need a variance for three houses, the three houses that are direct, directly off of the private road or for whatever.
As a reference, you do have twelve miles of private roads in this town, so it's, um, it's not uncommon.
Yeah, but it needs, um, select board approval.
Can you, twelve miles of road in this town?
According to the master plan, yeah.
They must not be town-maintained.
Well, no, they're, yeah, that's only if it's a private road.
Well, I maintain most of the private roads as well, and I, um.
You don't think it's that high?
What's that?
You don't think it's that high?
I guess I'll have to get my, um, the anchor, the anchor out.
Are there any other questions?
So there was some concerning mention.
Got your name?
Matt Lampron, Little Hill Road. There's some mention of that road being turned over to the town at some point, and that's a problem that, um, a lot of small towns have seen, like Kennable Road in Bosco Inn was the same exact thing, and they were required to keep it a private road. Um, it's at the complete other end of town, the town now has taken it over because there weren't any prescriptions made at the time to secure it as a private road, and now they drive five miles up Route Four to get there to maintain it with a one ton because, and that's not what we wanna probably make sure that we have those. So the question is, is do we have any HOAs planned or condo documents planned for this development that prescribe those things?
Yes, well, I think that, any, anything that we do in the future, there would have to be a driveway maintenance agreement executed as part of the deed, so that anybody purchasing one of those lots inside the deed, there would be, hey, refer to this document right here, it says these are your shared responsibilities. So that, that's very common to happen, and obviously that's something that we propose to, you know, include as part of our passage. We'd have a draft declaration of common driveway and road, you know, private road maintenance agreement, so.
There also has to be a release of liability recorded to the American government.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, yeah.
So, eh, even if they built the road to town specs, say they built a nice, really nice road, that doesn't necessarily mean the town has to accept it.
Oh, understood, I'm just from experience on, I was on the planning board for a number of years in Bosco Inn. That was a constant concern of ours, was every time this came up, to make sure that we had safeguards in place so that it didn't happen again, where all of a sudden, we're fine, it's a private road, we don't have to worry about it in five, six years down the road.
Well, that's, that's what I was bringing up earlier, is, you know, his, his intentions are great now.
Yes, his are.
These houses are gonna get sold at some point. I mean, I don't know how far in, in the future, and those people are gonna want services, that's the way things work, we've all seen it, you know.
Well, they're paying taxes, so, I mean, I, you know, necessarily blame them for wanting services.
I had two other, two other points. Um, one was the, the private road and the upgrading of the, I'll call it a classics road, that's what it's been my whole life. It's well that that can get to be a six percent grade, if that meets what we have in town, other places, it's certainly not that now. If that gets moved up to the top of the hill, and now his thousand-foot-long driveway is eight percent the whole way, I think that's something that everybody on every side should consider. Do you want to have a private road at eight percent for your fire trucks, or an upgraded section of six hundred feet at six percent? Two percent on there? But it's gonna be, it's gonna be designed and prescribed, in my opinion, at the application, to show that all of those percentages can be met, because going from ten percent to six percent there, I don't know.
Fixing, as far as I can hear from what Eddie said, you have, fixing up the road down to where they wanna go is not gonna change the grade.
No, we'd have to, if we were to upgrade any of that road, we'd have to consider the grade. And in order to change the grade, there would have to be probably an excavation of the burial, um, and then, you know, side slopes, what have you, drainage. There would be, there would be something different to show you here tonight. We haven't gone down that avenue.
It still would be the same grade.
Well, they, they cut the top of the hill off it.
They would even it out instead of the steep part and then the more level and the steep, because it, it isn't a steady grade right now.
I stand corrected.
If you came up the top of the hill, you could be able to wind that down and change your grade also, and it would be not quite so, you know.
Would it still be a straight line once you do that, or would it be like?
Oh, S-curve it down something, you know, I mean, the grade down in there, doesn't have to come right straight off, it could go gradually and, and make it, you know, that way. But the thing you gotta remember is, if we still, either way you look at it, the fire truck goes down there, but you're gonna be given your liability of fire and all that up as soon as you get that private road. He doesn't have to be right there. So you're gonna have to take that into pretty good consideration, that they get there when they get there, and then the water thing is, that's an issue there, Little Hills, no water.
I think it was premature to design a pond and stuff like that, that's, that's all part of the, the plan, so.
So I, I wouldn't be looking for a pond up there, I'd be looking for a, at least a thirty thousand gallon, um, cement sister.
I think if we had an alternative means where we had a, um, a hydrant that worked, and it was, you know, we could prove that it worked, and it's beneficial to the town to have that fire protection there, not only for his homes, but for other homes, you know, as long as we address that fire, I mean, there are alternatives besides sisters, and sisters need maintenance, tend to fail. If, if ponds are built properly, and you have the, uh, numbers to show that you're gonna retain water, I mean, that's not an issue.
Ponds to go dry, I've got two of them.
Not, not up there designed, I would estimate the number, you have to show it, I think.
I got one that's been there longer than all of us sitting here together, and that thing dries up.
Well, I think it's premature to discuss that too.
Well, it is, but I'm just pointing out different facts that.
But is that an existing pond or one that was designed to be used as a hydrant?
It's an existing pond, and then there's one that was dug that doesn't, and, and that doesn't, it will go dry. You know, it, it's dry, and that up there on the hill, there's water, is the issue up there, always has been, it's always gonna be, so.
Three point, three point one miles from, from the turnaround to the first, um, dry hydrant at Winter Pocket. So that's, that's six miles, six two, six point two miles down back.
Are there any other comments, questions?
George Gagnon, three D Littleville. Um, so, eh, I just wanted to be sure, so you're talking about basically making four different families in here, and there's, is it gonna be any kind of business or just family living there? I'm just curious, like, any businesses, like, like you wanna do a store, or do you wanna do anything where, like, you're selling stuff or any, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not that it's really any of my business.
We just talked about it and, you know, not at the moment, no, there's nothing on the phone.
We all do stuff around here, people sell eggs, people do this thing, you know?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I don't have anything to describe in detail at this moment that I think would be relevant.
Any other questions? Guys are absolutely quiet all of a sudden.
So is it five houses and a barn?
Four in a barn.
Yeah, well, yes, it's five houses and a barn that may have some.
No, I think the town really needs to do is due diligence is where the Class 6 road actually starts. And because there was a vote by the select board to move the Class 6 road down, they called it Class 5, the summer cottages, back in 2007 on September 10th. And that vote was irregular. They never informed the town population to vote, okay? And a sign got put up by the turnaround, so the Class 6 actually starts at Matt Balance driveway.
Or pavement.
Absolutely, yes, yep. The town record show all that information.
I'm not following you here, what's the issue?
It's actually a Class 6 road with a pavement stops.
Where the turnaround is.
No, where the pavement stops, which is just, which is partway through my land.
Right at the end of Sue's property. My idea to that is that the town has maintained it up to the turnaround. And the turnaround, where they placed the signs where it starts, they have kept it, they've maintained it regularly. They've met all the criteria as far as getting a Class 5 road. After they stopped falling, there's no maintenance, that would be where the Class 6 starts.
Yep, but the select board does not have the authority to change a class of a road.
No, and that's, I understand the documentation that your attorney produced, Ms. Raffano. I did read that. And what he's stating is that when the town classified that road as a Class 5 road to summer cottages, that it wasn't properly noticed. And therefore, it's not applicable. So we do understand that. So I mean, as far as the road status goes, if we wanted the town to accept it as a Class 5 road, we would have to meet the criteria for a Class 5 road. It's just one of those things right now, why are we going to go through all those avenues to figure that out? We have the documentation you've supplied. And, you know, if we need to go somewhere as far as getting that road accepted, we would have a conversation with the select board.
And then one other thing, if you're going to put a 21-foot road starting at the end of the pavement at Matt Balance. You take this gentleman here on the left and Matt's on the right. One of them stone walls are going to have to, somebody's going to have to give to put that up to town specs.
No, you'll take our land.
Well, that's actually, it was dedicated by subdivision. What you see for a bold line right there is the end of the ownership of the, what was titled to these property owners. They, when they did these subdivisions, so they tried to accommodate four, was a 66-foot road in that section. And if we needed to do some improvements, where we had to do something on our land, we know that, we can give an easement and we can take our wall. So those are all this, you know, early thoughts. And I do understand that if any grading had to happen, we'd have to figure out where that would go. Well, I think what Emmett's saying is that the improvement would have to stop at the end of the pavement. And that would be my property and Matt Balance property. So someone's taking land from us to do that. So those two properties, like I said, if you take a look at the plans right there, they have a statute that's called dedication by subdivision. So if you want, if a plat shows a right-of-way line at a certain location, dedication by subdivision, that's where the line shows, it's behind the wall when it was subdivided. So our intention isn't to do anything right now, we don't know. I think if we did that, we'd show you, we'd show you what we did. That'd be an issue with me because my electrical connection actually starts on the outside of the stone wall coming to the house, so. All things to consider, understood, yeah.
One quick correction, this gentleman asked me if we had any business plans aside from, I want to clarify that there is the idea of running a small farm, but again, it's small. And then as part of that, I have a personal interest in doing some distilling if I'm allowed to, but nothing.
When they're on the place you're on.
There are no other questions, I think we're going to.
No, I just wondered if everybody, they know they don't have to stay anymore if they don't, they're done.
That was the plan.
I figured that we didn't want to hold on to our business unless you really want to stay for all of it.
So is the board also their question?
I was just, the road part of it, it's going to be, I mean, what do you got for a plan coming back that's like?
We'll have to discuss it. Obviously, you've got to start somewhere. And I think starting somewhere and you go in there and everybody pokes your leg, laughs at you.
Well, we don't, we just, this is what we saw in the first part of things. And then like, this is the map that we would look at.
Honestly, I think that he looked at your regulations and saw you with like this 2% road grade, which is.
5%.
Whatever it is, that's a super low.
It's a super low.
I don't know if you even have any rules in the town that try to meet that criteria at some point, you know?
Yeah, oh, I, but that's what they, I mean, it's not, we didn't make the rules.
No, we understand that. So that's what he was looking at when he was telling us this. He was looking at something that was going to be in your eye for your regulations. We'd like to look at that premise. We are open to.
At the top and then if you can kind of wind it down through things that, if that is possible, that looks like that would be, you know, to start at the top. Because going down over that hill, you don't come back, I've seen it when I plowed that years ago in the 90s. You'd have to go out through the dam, you can't just back up that hill.
We understand that. I mean, that's why if we were to have, we'd have something different. Like you said, if you actually take, and we're going to live right now, it's just up there.
Oh, I know, I, yeah, yeah.
I'm not officially in a butter, my land doesn't touch any of theirs. But I'm. I think I should, I can make comments from during hearing from out there, but I can't.
But I think though, I know the ground somewhat, I think you could probably wind it down in to get where you're, where you're going, you know? I mean, it doesn't drop it does on the line.
What?
The other part, you could wind that down and make that work.
When we first opened the house up there, they had to turn it.
Yeah, and the thing of it is, I don't believe, you know, when you come to the select board, so. You are going to go, that's how I can pretty much.
I just, what I worry, yeah, I would just worry about if we.
Well, I mean, the fire stop, I think what they call for is part of the NFI regulations is that you have a 18-foot travel. They're going to say it has to be paved, it calls for shoulders, it calls for turning radiuses, it calls for certain things, right? We would meet that criteria in our private road. We would have.
And I've seen his house burn freezing rain up there. I don't know, it was December, January. And it's like, you cannot, one quarter, nothing. I mean, you'd go down, get a load of sand, come back, you can't do it.
We understand that, I know.
So going down over that hill.
We can look at it.
Are we sort of going to have this for a minute here?
We may have to do something that is. That takes money.
Oh, I know, yeah, well, if you're going to do what there's.
So we did have a location in another spot. I don't think that it was desired, I don't remember why. We wanted to do something that was desirable as far as meeting the town's regulations. I think we came in, we'd probably come in with a waiver before the road, preliminary grading or something before it went forward, you know?
So I just trying to cut, so you know exactly where we're coming from.
We know what we wanted, we want a consensus tonight of the board's opinions on the next step. We want to hear some concerns from the day we're doing this. This is one of those things where, you know, it's a big piece of property.
Yeah, oh, I get it, I am.
Doing something crazy here, you know, these are big lots.
Well, I know the ground. So you think, you know, and I know the guy that lost that ground. I saw him when it got lost.
This is history and if he wants to do it, that's what he wants to do.
Yes, I don't have problems, I don't have problems with it. I just, I'm not going to put my fire trucks down in somewhere where they shouldn't be.
No, we'd have to go, no, we'd have to go by.
And that's where I'm coming from.
We're not asking for the existing road, we didn't come and say this.
Pointing information, you know, the gate on the road in 1987, the floodwater came. From right from the bottom, more than halfway up to that gate. That was fact, my wife and I went in the.
What did they say, the elevation was 460?
Yeah, no, we're talking about.
I just want you to know that as a board and as both boards, we're not opposed to having the boundless lengthiness, it's just a design that we're concerned about. But we would like to see more humans come into the town. You know, this is something that the town is really interested in other places if it's done.
Well, this is what he wants to do.
So I just wanted to know, it's not all my.
I do appreciate that statement. I know our client, you know, it took a lot for him to come in here and show you the streams. Everybody wants to be part of it now.
We want to have more people.
We've all signed, that's secret. Up in there, couple times.
We're not like what people said. Not in this town, but other towns.
So, I mean, I got the consensus from you guys, tell me if I'm wrong, that, you know, if I was to come in here and ask for a waiver with a road, private road that went through here, you have to understand that 5% is very difficult to do anything on a property.
We already know that.
We do understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, obviously, we got to go back to the drawing board and, you know, talk with our client to see what his interests are now and changes. And, you know, if we come back with something, it might just be another conceptual, it might be full-blown. I don't know if he wants to take the risk yet, but eventually, we'll have, you know, real stuff for you guys to look at. Just don't poke at it right now because it's preliminary.
Oh, no, but we're just pointing out facts.
I love all the information that you shared.
Yeah, no, that's all, I didn't have any issue. I just pointed, it's not what he showed us to start with. And then I, you know, I've looked at it three different times up there, scoped it all out and I just, the safety thing is the problem.
We got it, we're going to address it. I know you guys got your own stuff to do. I want to thank you all for your time tonight. I volunteer in my town too for the planning board, I know how much it is. It seems so simple, but it's always a lot of work.
Yeah, it's all good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, we're going to talk about planning board rules and procedures. There wasn't much to update. Updated was the time and the hour, because it was at 7 o'clock, so I moved to 6:30. And then I'm setting it, I know, it's terrible. And then I moved it for, we're meeting the first Tuesday of the month, I think this is going to be the new time. So I changed it in that part of the regulation. And then back in the second part, it says something about audio recordings. So I just updated it to digital recordings in general. I changed it from that the recordings will be deleted because we don't delete them, they're public theory. I said that we're going to adhere to whatever the town's record retention policy is. Because the town has its own record.
I don't know who does the minutes.
I write this.
That's 36 ways to spell my name, that's the one I like.
Trying to get it right.
When, and we start, we move to the first Tuesday of the month after the New Year?
After the New Year.
Beginning of January, I myself would, so I.
So I don't know if we want to adopt the changes until that point, so that we're not changing the rules to be that, we're not.
Whatever you think is the right thing to do.
I don't think anybody looks at our rules, other than me.
Well, I do. I do, it's here.
I know, don't ever ask Marla about policy, procedure.
Are there any comments on the changes?
They all make sense.
Matt's have a motion here.
We're making a motion. Yeah, you go, you go.
I'd like to move that we approve those changes effective January 1st of 2025.
Well, all of it, all of these changes can be effective.
No, because it says we meet the first Tuesday of the month and we're not going to do that till January.
You're right, you're right, I stand corrected.
That's what he was just saying.
Yeah, I stand corrected.
So we're changing it to the first Tuesday?
Starting in January.
Oh, okay. Why, now why did they do that?
So Emmett can come more often. Because we need his input.
I didn't agree to that.
You weren't here.
I know.
Do we have a second?
Tuesday, exactly.
I want to favor Susan's motion.
Aye.
Okay, and then we got minutes. Minutes, did you guys read over the minutes?
This was the one that I was at home for and just completely spaced the meeting. So I'm going to abstain from whatever vote you take. I couldn't believe it when I went into my bedroom and it said, oh shit. I was supposed to be at the planning board meeting.
I must confess, I did that once.
Oh, didn't I?
It was on my calendar, I thought about it in the morning, but, yep.
But just take a quick look and see if.
I did actually read through it because I was curious about the co-parts property. The next time we buy a fire, buy a fire truck, it's going to be almost a million dollars.
That's it, true.
You might want to let co-parts in then. Help people tax base.
So far, they keep paying their taxes.
Oh, good. Couldn't we evaluate business land that's doing something for more money than a piece of empty land?
That would have been a perfect place to do a giant solar farm. Because it doesn't matter that it's in wetlands and stuff because it's surface only.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
I second it.
I want to favor.
Aye.
One abstention.
Me too.
Two abstentions.
Two.
Oh, you weren't here.
You didn't, you didn't remember that I wasn't here?
That's right, and I.
A couple of small pieces of other business.
All right.
Rob Walensky would like to join the planning board as an alternate. So I wanted to bring that up to the board to see if you were willing to have him as an alternate.
He was the guy in Martin Road?
You bet.
With the trees and?
No.
No, he's on, he's on Winter Pocket.
Oh, okay, yes.
And he's been. He's a great guy.
Yeah.
He's a forest.
He's the forest, he's the emergency management director.
Okay.
He'd be a great asset.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will have him fill out the appointment form and then we'll get him appointed on Monday.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Perfect, and I think, oh, and then the small other thing is I put a thing into the packet that Mr. Phillips' surveyor was going to come back with those plans. They're still not ready, so that's going to come up at the September meeting. And then I'll be.
they're still not ready, so that's gonna come up at the September meeting, and then they'll be ready for you to look at the update and then sign the file, all right? And that's it.
Did you happen to bring that driveway, seven? All right, um...
Ready to adjourn?
I, I move major.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at that.
Let her rip.
That's right, spot on.
That is not bad, considering the, the length of the, the one issue, yeah. One topic, I shouldn't call it an issue.
All right, yeah. So, why is, maybe you can help me out here, why is that, whether it's a...